Show didn't like who they did it, so he worked up the envelope and then announced to honor and they still have, kept a music association to this day back him up. He opened up Charlie Ridge, remember Charlie Ridge singer?
Yeah.
He was entertainer of the year, I can't remember who he was.
Mayor? We're, we're ready.
I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the Bowling Green Board of Commissioners for January sixteenth, two thousand eighteen. Invite you to stand if you choose whilst Commissioner Perigin leads us in invocation and then follow with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please bow your head in prayer if you so choose. Loving Father, thank you on behalf of all of us gathered here. Thank you for our blessings and for the honor of doing useful work and bearing responsibilities. I'm praying for our mayor, commission, and city officials and all gathered here that you grant us the wisdom to govern amid conflicting issues, a thirst for justice and what's right, confidence in the ability to work together towards the betterment of our community. It's in your name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Williams?
Here.
Commissioner Denny?
Here.
Commissioner Nash?
Here.
Commissioner Perigin?
Here.
Mayor Wilkerson?
We have a special guest with us this evening and it's our pleasure on behalf of the commission to invite Cheyenne Jones if you would come and stand with us at the podium and bring your family too. Your mom and dad and your brother Ricky, right?
Yes.
So we have just a, an opportunity as a city to recognize you for all your hard work, so on behalf of the city of Bowling, we're gonna, Bowling Green, we're gonna proclaim this Cheyenne Jones Day. So whereas Cheyenne Jones is fifteen years old and although a native of Paducah, Kentucky, she currently resides in Bowling Green and attends Bowling Green High School, and whereas Cheyenne is one of nine children and began singing at the age of four and at seven began performing in church with her father. And whereas Cheyenne entered her first talent contest at eight years old and started singing at soccer and football games in town, eventually traveling outside of Kentucky to perform. And whereas a video was made of Cheyenne singing the National Anthem and sent to every NBA team in the country, and the Utah Jazz actually flew Cheyenne to Utah to perform. And whereas Cheyenne was part of Team Jennifer Hudson on NBC's The Voice program and was part of the live show's top ten contestants. And whereas Cheyenne Jones talent and hard work were represented every week throughout her time on The Voice. And whereas the city of Bowling Green is fortunate to have such a wonderful young talent representing the city of Bowling Green, now therefore we, the Bowling Green Board of Commissioners, do hereby proclaim January sixteenth, two thousand eighteen, as Cheyenne Jones Day in Bowling Green and thank Cheyenne for representing our great city.
Thank you so much.
Sue, Sue, you wanna turn this way with it? If you can't see me, you can't see the camera.
Dad can't see around Cheyenne's hair. Chad, do you have any comments for us before you step away? You have any comments for us before you step away?
Um, thank you so much. This means a lot to me and I appreciate, I appreciate everything that y'all have done for me.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you for coming to Bowling Green from that other town in western Kentucky.
It's truly, it's truly an honor. I mean, we have had a chance to experience a lot of things and we have really been welcomed and loved by Bowling Green and, and we part of the family. This is family. And, uh, the love is just overwhelming. I'm, I'm set up with full of tears to be honest. A day? Oh, man. That's, that's beautiful. I just, hey, we salute you guys.
Thank you. Thank you for Cheyenne. We appreciate it.
Keep up the good work.
Thank you again. Are there any other wards of recognitions? Do you have any comments tonight?
I do, Mayor. I think you all wanna join me in thanking Public Works Department for the job it's done in cleaning our roads and dealing with the difficult weather environment we've had lately. I wanna thank Greg Meredith, our new Public Works Director, kinda new, and a long time of public work op director Bobby Phelps and his staff who are out there right now continuing the job while we're in here having a meeting and at night we'll be sleeping and they'll be working. So I, I think we all forget that there's people out there doing the job for us while we're not there, so I wanna thank them.
Most people get a snow day. That's when we generally come to work, so. Any other comments?
No, that's it.
All right. First item is approval of minutes of two meetings, both on January second, two thousand eighteen, a regular meeting and then a special meeting was before that.
I move.
Second.
Motion by Perigin, second by Williams. Are there any additions, deletions, or corrections? Please call the roll.
Williams?
Yes.
Denny?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Perigin?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. First item is second reading of ordinance BG two thousand eighteen, number one.
Ordinance rezoning real estate. Ordinance rezoning a tract of land containing fifty-three point two-three acres from agriculture to RS one D, single-family residential located at six fifty-four John D. Jones Road, presently owned by Pin Oak Developments LLC.
Moved.
By Denny, second by Nash. This is the second reading of a recommendation for planning and zoning. It was unanimous vote with one abstention. Are there any questions or comments? Please call the roll.
Williams?
Yes.
Denny?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Perigin?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Second reading of ordinance BG two thousand eighteen, number two.
Ordinance rezoning real estate. Ordinance rezoning portions of tracts of land containing eighty-two point zero-one acres from agriculture to HI-heavy industrial to RS one, sorry, and HI-heavy industrial to RS one D, single-family residential and RM four multifamily residential located on Plano Road presently owned by Natura Parkway Holdings LLC and Greenwood Crossings Incorporated with Rodney Rogers and Renee Isaacs doing business as Magnolia Hills as contract vendee.
I move.
Second.
By Perigin, second by Williams. Again, second reading on a unanimous recommendation for planning and zoning. Is there any other comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Williams?
Yes.
Denny?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Perigin?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Second reading of BG, ordinance BG two thousand eighteen, number three.
Ordinance amending code of ordinances. Ordinance amending chapters nine, general offenses, and twenty-two traffic and motor vehicles of the City of Bowling Green Code of Ordances to regulate panhandling, begging, charitable, and political solicitation and to make other administrative changes.
I'll move.
Second.
Perigin, second by Nash, Mr. DeFebbe.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like Doug Hawkins, our police chief, to come forward to talk about the ID system that he is developing that may be helpful in to implement this new ordinance. Doug?
Thank you, Mr. DeFebbe. Mayor and commissioners, is, with the, the first reading of this ordinance, we set into motion an effort to develop an ID system that, or a permit system that you all have asked to be put in place under this new ordinance. And so the team at the police department has worked on this. We wanna make it as easy as we can for those people who wanna get those permits. They can come in any, any weekday during business hours and because of the, the way that the ordinance is proposed and written, they have up to four non-consecutive days without a permit or two consecutive days before they're required to get a permit. So even if it's a weekend time period, they might have to take a day off in order to comply with the ordinance, but they could still get their permit within the required number of days. They come into the police department, our records division, which is located there at the lobby, will be handling, the processing of these permits. We have a form to fill out. If they have an ID, you fill out one side of this form. If they don't have an ID, we'll fill out another side. It's an affidavit essentially, them swearing to who they are and getting a valid address and so forth. As part of that process, we wanna make it easy for both of them and for the people on the enforcement side of this as well, we're gonna create an actual hang tag ID that they can wear around their neck. We have existing software and, and equipment that allows us to do this. Actually, we use the same system to do police officer IDs, only it's, it's formatted a little differently. But this will allow us to give a pictured permit to each individual that they will be able to wear and we're, we, we plan on providing some lanyard that they can hang around their neck to give some visual identification that they have gotten that, or if the police officer has a reason to contact them, they would be able to look at this and, and see that it has a, as a reference to the ordinance. It will have a numerically unique permit number. It'll also have the date issued and the date of expiration. These are good for two years under ordinance. And so there, there is also a rare exception that I might be able to revoke one for cause. It would have to be something pretty important for me to wanna do that. We're also gonna do a field information card that will allow them to get into our record system to also validate that they have a valid active permit. If for some reason they were to lose this, they don't have to have this in order for them to have a valid permit, but it would make it easier to, to validate that, if you will. So it's a real simple process. We think it'll take about ten minutes to get this all told, to fill out the paperwork, to get the picture made, to get their ID issued, or their permit, their hang tag permit issued. So we think it's a real simple, real easy process for them to go through. No cost associated with that. They can do it pretty quickly. I think I have beat my three minutes. Questions or comments?
Two fifty-eight. Any comments or questions for Mr., for Chief Hawkins? Sounds like a good plan. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Are there any other comments or questions regarding the change in the panhandling ordinance? Please call the roll.
Williams?
Yes.
Denny?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Perigin?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Municipal order two thousand eighteen, four.
Municipal order approving the probationary appointments of Rebecca A. Orndorf and Bethany J. Reckert to the position of communications dispatcher in the police department.
Moved.
By Nash, second by Perigin, Mr. DeFebbe.
Thank you, Mayor. One of the more difficult positions we have to fill in the city is that of dispatcher. We're honored tonight to have an opportunity to fill two of our five existing openings. We had twenty-eight applicants, four were interviewed and from that distillation, we're happy to have Rebecca Orndorf and Bethany Reckert here tonight. I believe the applicants are here to accept your plaudits if you.
They're not here?
One is.
One is. Bethany's here, I'm sorry. Are there any comments or questions? Do you mind standing up so everybody get a chance to look at you? We hope the technician's able to, to focus in on you had a little difficulty there before. Thank you for being here. We appreciate it. Any other comments or questions?
Congratulations.
I'm not gonna ask her to make a speech. I normally do that. In her case, since I know her dad and everything, and she comes from a good family, I'm not gonna ask for the normal five-minute speech.
That'll work for me. I'm sure it will for her too. Any other comments? Please call the roll.
Williams?
Yes.
Denny?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Perigin?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Municipal order two thousand eighteen, number five.
Municipal order authorizing adoption of the revised City of Bowling Green Public Safety Promotional Procedures.
Moved.
Motion by Nash, second by Williams, Mr. DeFebbe.
True to form, we have standing operating procedures in police and fire even when it involves promotion. We have a couple of minor changes tonight. I thought it'd be important since it is dealing with promotion that Michael come up and, and vet this publicly. Michael?
Thank you and good afternoon. We do have standard procedures we use to guide our promotional process each year. Occasionally have to come back to you with some proposed changes typically to make sure our policies are clear. One change we wanna make is last year we put the possibility of carrying over scores in abeyance for a year because police had moved to a different testing company, so we had different written tests. Also had moved to assessment centers rather than oral interview, so it wasn't logical for us to carry over, let people carry over their scores from the previous year since the testing process was so different. Also, fire doesn't necessarily want to allow carrying over scores because the tests do change from year to year and they didn't wanna be in a situation where they've made a change and then don't have an apples-to-apples comparison from the previous year. But this year we do wanna allow police to carry over scores if they so choose, and that's the reason for then making the change here that each year we'll make the decision whether they're going to be allowed to carry over the score and we would make that decision and declare that before the testing process starts. And just to be clear, candidates can carry over the score one time. It's not like they can carry year after year, but if they want to do so, they'd be able to carry it over one time. The second change again is very minor. We do have a tie-breaking process. If we have two candidates that have the same exact score on the same test, seniority in the department is a tie-breaker. We faced a possibility this year of a second, of still having a tie, so the recommendation here is we'd go ahead and list both candidates at the same rank, but have a couple of options where the chief can use one of the particular test components as a tie-breaker if he so chooses, so. Any questions on those?
Comment your questions for Mr. What is the benefit of allowing a carryover?
Well, they don't have to prepare obviously each year. It's a very grueling process and so if they can carry over, if they're satisfied with the score that they got last year, then obviously they don't have to prepare again and go through the process. And there's a savings to the city too because, you know, we may only be testing, say fifteen people instead of twenty-five, so there's a certain savings to us as well.
And what, what is the cost per test?
Well, it very, the assessment center is, is a time, it's almost time more than test, but, you know, an individual written test isn't that expensive. But as an example, with the assessment center, we might spend all day testing three deputy chief candidates. If only one tests and the other two carry over their score, we might only be spending a half a day instead of a full day and those assessors cost us, you know, so much per day.
What's the downside of allowing carryover?
Candidates may not be preparing every year, you know, if they're reading the books every year and going through the process, obviously they may be a little better prepared for when they get promoted. So there is a downside if they choose not to test that year. But again, this would be their option as to whether they carry over their score or not.
So do they choose whether or not to carry over or does administration choose whether or not to carry?
They would choose. When, in the normal years prior to this last year, when we, when we take applications, candidates would have a choice. I wanna carry over my score from last year or I wanna test, and it's their choice.
And they do that at the outset, so they don't test and then allow the opportunity to carry?
Correct. Yeah, they have to make, they have to make that declaration before, before we order tests and before the testing occurs.
No further questions? Please call the roll.
Williams?
Yes.
Denny?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Perigin?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Municipal order two thousand eighteen, number six.
Municipal order amending municipal order number two thousand seventeen twenty-seven to rescind the award for a portion of bid number two thousand seventeen thirty-seven related to police uniforms from Bluegrass Uniforms and Equipment of Bowling Green, Kentucky, and to authorize the award to the next lowest bidder, CMC Uniforms and Equipment Company Incorporated of Nashville, Tennessee, and Galls Incorporated of Lexington, Kentucky, based on unit prices.
I'll move.
Second. Motion by Perigin, second by Nash, Mr. DeFebbe.
Thank you, Mayor. And last year's two seventeen bid for uniforms, the Bluegrass was the winner or low bidder on four items. They have since notify us that they can no longer meet those, that parts of the bid, so we're left with having to still fulfill the need, so we wanna go to the next lowest bidder, which would be a company out of Nashville, CMC, as well as a longstanding police and fire company known as Galls out of Lexington. We're okay with this and we just need to move on and get the uniforms.
Comment your questions. Will this preclude Bluegrass from bidding in the future?
Well, obviously they, unless they improve their ability to meet, to serve these items, but maybe they have other items that they can service. I, to be direct, I don't know the answer, Slim, to all that, the full manifest of that question.
Please call the roll.
Williams?
Yes.
Denny?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Perigin?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Municipal order two thousand eighteen, number seven.
Municipal order authorizing and accepting bid number two thousand eighteen forty-one for the purchase of a tandem dump truck for the Public Works Operations Division from Tri-State International Trucks of Bowling Green Incorporated of Bowling Green, Kentucky in the amount of one hundred and seventeen thousand eight hundred and sixty dollars.
Move. Second.
By Williams, second by Perigin, Mr. DeFebbe.
As we mentioned in the budget process, Public Works needs a new tandem truck for its operations. We have ten bidders. We had one that was a low bidder but didn't meet the requirements. We're here tonight to recommend the next appropriate bidder, which is Tri-State of Bowling Green. They received a local preference of twenty-six hundred and fifty-one dollars from us to qualify them as the lower bidder. We have no problem with this and recommend this bid. Greg is here if you have any questions about how the tandem dump truck will be operationalized.
Comment your questions. Please call the roll.
Williams?
Yes.
Denny?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Perigin?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Municipal order two thousand eighteen, number eight.
Municipal order authorizing the submission and acceptance of a grant application with the Federal Transit Administration for federal fiscal year two thousand eighteen transportation assistance under the section fifty-three oh seven and fifty-three thirty-nine programs.
Moved.
Second.
Motion by Nash, second by Williams, Mr. DeFebbe.
Thank you, Mayor. Either Brent or Nick will come up and explain this municipal order, but I'd just like to give a little plug for our bus company and for us. This is the fifteenth year that this city has operated a bus company, something that is important for those who don't drive in our community and we're pretty proud of that. So I'll turn it over to Nick. Nick?
Thank you, Mr. DeFebbe. Mayor, commissioners, for about the last fifteen years, the city has received funding annually from the Federal Transit Administration to provide local public transit service. While the city receives this funding directly, we actually don't provide this service directly as we contracted out with GoBG transit through Community Action of Southern Kentucky. We're requesting your approval tonight to apply for and accept our FY eighteen funding in the amount of approximately one point two million dollars. There are matching funds required. That would be provided through state funding, local funds provided through the local agency appropriation process, and other in-kind sources provided by the city and GoBG transit. So that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions for Mr. Not related specifically to the grant because I'm pleased that we receive it, more related to the bus routes. Do, does GoBG do any coordination with specifically the chamber and related to the, you know, more than two thousand jobs that we have available in the city of Bowling Green that we can't get filled right now? And is there any coordination between those entities to see that there's transportation to the very locations where those jobs are at to see if that's what's holding us back in getting more applicants into those positions?
Specifically, I'm sorry, I can't really, I do know that GoBG Transit tries to work with our local businesses to provide service the best they can, so.
We get an answer to that at some point? That'd be great. Thank you. Comment your questions? Roll.
Williams?
Yes.
Denny?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Perigin?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Municipal order two thousand eighteen, number nine.
Municipal order authorizing the submission of an application for five-star and urban waters restoration program funds to the National Wildlife, National Fish and Wildlife Foundation for the purchase of water quality monitoring equipment in an amount up to forty-two thousand six hundred and sixty dollars.
Second.
Denny, second.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I'd like to thank Nick for his creativity in trying to find this obscure source of funding to help us get whatever we can get to help our company, so I wanna thank him for doing that. As you know, we are a city that has to watch our, the quality and quantity of our discharge into local streams and we have to manage that. With your diligence, due diligence, I'd like to have Matt Powell come up briefly, give you an overview why we need, why this would be helpful for our quality. Matt?
So your Nick's creativity is what he's saying.
I am Nick's creativity. This is one we found. So one of the requirements that we have underneath our municipal separate storm sewer management permit is that we are keeping an eye on our streams, our ambient quality of our streams and the things that are happening to ensure that the city doesn't have an adverse impact on those streams and if we do, that we take the proper measures to, to address those impacts. Well, we can't know if we're not watching, so we've been establishing a surface water quality monitoring network. This grant affords us the opportunity to take our next step in establishing that network with our next station, which we were going to by anyway, that's something that we had already planned to do, and if we win the grant, we're able to buy a second one and fast-forward our program by a year if we're awarded the fund. So there is a fifty percent match on the grant, but that's in our budget, that's where we're going anyway. We just get to leapfrog a year.
Questions or comments? I don't know how hard you work on this as well. Please call the roll.
Williams?
Yes.
Denny?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Perigin?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Municipal order two thousand eighteen, number ten.
Municipal order authorizing and approving the submission of an application for Homeland Security Grant Funds through the Federal Emergency Management Agency Assistance to Firefighters Grant Program in the amount of one hundred and fourteen thousand three hundred dollars for the purchase of a mobile breathing air trailer system for the fire department.
I'll move.
Perigin, second by Nash, Mr. DeFebbe.
Thank you, Mayor. Suffice it to say, going into a burning building is a hostile environment for one's lungs and firemen have to use basically scuba gear, their own oxygen, I mean their own air to breathe in that environment. We use a lot of air during fire events. Nick and Jason have went out and found this grant that is a ninety percent payment by FEMA to buy a mobile trailer to go and allow us to fill up our air tanks at various locations as well as provide a stationary tank filler and also provide a generator. Jason's here if you'd like him to talk about the actual equipment, but we think it's needed. It'd be helpful and it's a ninety-ten match, which is hard to pass up.
Questions?
Yes.
Denny?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Perigin?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Municipal order two thousand eighteen, number eleven.
Municipal order approving construction and accepting maintenance of Chippewa Drive in the Indian Ridge subdivision.
I'll move.
Second.
Nash, second by Williams.
With the commission's courtesy, items number eleven and twelve are in the same family involving the city taking into its domain roads and appurtenances that have been done by a developer and are now ready to be taken into our system. As the commission knows, we have an inspection process and, and requirements that have to be met before we bring a road or a subdivision into our domain. On the first one, under Chippewa, we bring in point two-five miles of roadway and appurtenances, meaning sidewalks, and the second would be six hundred and seventy-five feet of roadway and appurtenances. Greg Meredith is here if you have any questions.
I have one quick question. Those common areas A and B are not under city maintenance, just the roadway, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct, Mayor.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Williams?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Perigent?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Municipal order 2018 number 12.
Municipal order approving construction and accepting maintenance of Cave Mill Station subdivision.
I'll move.
Motion by Nash, second by Williams. You heard Mr. Fibo's explanation. Are there any further comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Williams?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Perigent?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. First reading of ordinance BG 2018 number four.
Ordinance closing a public right-of-way. Ordinance approving the closing of a portion of an unnamed alley located between 1124 and 1132 Kenton Street.
I'll move.
Second.
Motion by Perigent, second by Williams.
This was a simple public closure of a paper street. Ben's here to explain, but in essence, about 1,385 square feet of alley, paper alley, has been requested to go into, from public to private domain. It's not an actual street. It's just a paper right-of-way. The Planning Commission has approved this and has dealt with the neighbors to take the property. Again, Mr. Peterson's here if you have any questions.
The question, just half that, it doesn't go all the way across.
Only portion that is requested to be closed is that portion outlined in the yellow on the map. The property owner only agreed or that made the proposal to close that portion. The other property owner would not sign off to close the rest of that. So that's why it's just a portion.
Are there any, Ben, are there any structures there now? Or am I confusing a different issue on Kenton that we talked about before? I realize in this picture I couldn't see it.
This, both sides of this proposed alley closure will be all-new construction at some point. There may be structure there now. If they haven't, it's proposed to be demolished and be all-new redevelopment.
Thank you, sir.
Any questions or comments? Please call the roll.
Williams?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Perigent?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. First reading of ordinance BG 2018 number five.
Ordinance rezoning real estate. Ordinance rezoning a tract of land containing 0.31 acre from RM3 multifamily residential to RM4 multifamily residential located at 1569 Virginia Drive, presently owned by Stephanie Robin Reich.
I'll move.
Second.
Perigent, second by Williams. This is a recommendation from Planning and Zoning, which was a 5-4 vote. Was there anybody here that was interested in that particular piece of property? Are there any comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Williams?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Perigent?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Too late. I'll ask later.
First, yeah, we have the second reading coming up. First reading of ordinance BG 2018 number six.
Ordinance rezoning real estate. Ordinance rezoning tracts of land containing 0.81 acre from GB General Business to CB Central Business located at 719 and 727 East 12th Avenue, presently owned by TC Homes Enterprises LLC.
I'll move.
Second.
Perigent, second by Williams. Recommendation for a unanimous vote, recommendation from Planning and Zoning for this zone change. Are there any comments or questions?
What is taking place at this particular piece of property?
Sure, they're proposing to do a combination of a kind of coffee shop, coffee bar type of development, and then I believe the plans are for a proposed brewery and behind that.
Other comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Williams?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Perigent?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. First reading of ordinance BG 2018 number seven.
Ordinance rezoning real estate. Ordinance rezoning tracts of land containing 4.3658 acres from RE Residential Estate and F Floodplain to RM4 multifamily residential and F Floodplain located on Old Scottsville Road, presently owned by MFG Bowling Green Land LLC.
I'll move.
Second.
Motion by Perigent, second by Williams. This is the first reading of an ordinance with a recommendation of 5-3 from Planning and Zoning. I believe we have people here tonight wishing to bring some information to our attention. The way we generally do it, if there's information to be brought forward, is that we allow the attorneys, allow Mr. Peterson to give us a quick summary, then allow the attorneys that are representing them to go back and forth. And if anybody wants to make a comment about that, if they had presented evidence at Planning and Zoning, then they would be able to summarize their evidence here before us tonight. So, Mr. Peterson, if you would give us a brief overview of what occurred that evening, please.
Sure, I'll just read a couple of quick excerpts from the staff analysis of the staff report. So the general development plan submitted by the applicants, they're proposing 56 multifamily residential units on the 4.3 and change acres, added to the existing Cumberland Trace Village apartment. So it'd just be expansion of that existing multifamily development. There is some history with this application that was heard that the flume amendment and zone change were filed in 2015, and you can see the record of what happened there as well. But that application that was, the application that was previously approved, the existing Cumberland Trace apartments allowed 168 units, but only 144 were, units were actually constructed. So this 56 that is proposed with this application results in a net additional amount of 32 additional units as compared to what was previously approved. You do have the whole summary record, several pages there before you. Will not read that, obviously for time's sake. Plus, as you mentioned, the applicant and opposition both have counsel here tonight to address, address part of those proceedings. Ultimately, future land use map amendment was offered at the Planning Commission. That amendment was denied. And then the attorney for the applicant offered to still hear the zone change based on section 3.10.6 of the zoning ordinance, and that also mimics language in KRS 100.213, which states that there have been major changes, it states that the Planning Commission can consider a zone change if there have been major changes that have not been anticipated by the comprehensive plan. So it's either in compliance with the comprehensive plan or there's been major changes that weren't anticipated at the time the comprehensive plan was, was chosen. Since the future land use map was denied, the applicant argued that there were still significant changes in the area that were not anticipated by the, by the comprehensive plan. And ultimately, there was a motion made that resulted in that 5-4 vote for approval. So that's why you're seeing this here tonight before you, even though the future land use map amendment was denied. It's based on the, the argument that there have been major changes in the area that were not anticipated by the comprehensive plan. Yes, sir.
Ben? Where the additional apartments are going to be built, is that section of the total property a part that was given the okay day one?
No.
So this property that is being requested for the additional apartment is new property. Is that correct?
Yes. It's been applied for before and denied, and it just, just that section that's outlined on the map you have. So it had been applied for and denied, and, and there's a history there. Then they came back and applied for it this time, and it was approved. So the, this, it'd be for 56 units on that area that, that is proposed to be rezoned, which is 32 more than what was previously approved. So they could build, they could already build those, the difference, I'd have to do the math real quick, but the difference in what was previously approved on that existing property, not this new property, but on that existing property. Gets a little confusing there, but.
So you're saying there are apartments that they could build on the existing property?
Yes. So the difference in, 168 units, but they only constructed 144, but they have permission to construct that 168. So whatever that difference is, I'm not going to do on-camera math, but.
And so, and so now with these new pieces of property, they're asking for more apartments?
Correct. They're asking for 56, which is 32 more than the overall would have been.
Got it.
Okay. Yes, ma'am.
Where were the 24 going to be built originally?
They did not construct them. The plan did not, I don't know if the original plan showed them. I'd have to go back through our records and see, but that would kind of be up to their design.
Oh, there wouldn't be a chance of having 56 and then another 24 later on?
I would have to double-check that, but I believe that could be a possibility. I'll have to look at, I'll get back to you on that in just a second.
Sound like some part hasn't been approved? I, I mean, is there a slippage somewhere another of acreage or of lots that haven't been approved in all the process? It's confusing.
It is confusing, and I may be guilty of confusing it. Essentially, there, the existing Cumberland Trace apartments, not counting this rezone, would, has 144 units on it currently. They could find that additional, somebody did the math. 24, thank you, 24 units on that existing property, not including this, this 4.3 acres that they're asking for tonight. So this 4.3 is essentially an, an additional new application for 56 units. But they would be built as an extension of the existing apartment complex. So it's a, basically it's new property, which would be an extension of the existing apartment complex.
Yeah, I don't know. I'm so confused, I don't know what to ask.
Easiest way to look at it would be if you look at the concept plan. And you can see the, yeah, you can see just those, the three buildings that are added on to. And you see that line that, that goes across there. That's the, that's the property boundary difference, if you will, of where the existing complex starts and the new proposed addition begins.
The new apartments that's going, there, excuse me, they have the same setback line from Old Scottsville Road?
Well, it wouldn't, wouldn't be the same. They would be closer, obviously, than the existing apartments, but the setback that they're proposing is 40 feet instead of the 10 feet, which is required in the zoning ordinance. But, but it would be a lot closer than what the existing apartments are now because just the simple fact, the buildings and the amount of land they need to construct, the buildings and the parking lot will be closer to Old Scottsville Road.
They're 40 feet off of Old Scottsville Road.
In fact, they're proposing that 40-foot landscape buffer, as you see on that concept plan.
Are they proposing to open the apartment for ingress and egress onto Old Scottsville Road or remain on Cumberland Trace only?
They have prohibited access on Old Scottsville Road, and they would come out the existing, existing Cumberland Trace entrance.
What, what is the difference? You said that it was submitted previous and it was denied, and now it's been submitted again. What is the difference between the submission then and the submission now?
I, I have a hard time answering that because I was not here. I'd have to go back and look at the minutes from the 2015 meeting, so I don't have a direct answer for that. There's not, there's not much difference, best I remember, but the applicants may be able to.
Okay.
And the, and the first vote, the first vote of the P and Z was to deny?
Future land use map amendment. Which that's a final action by the Planning Commission. That's not something you all, you guys hear as part of the, the city commission. So typically what you'll see is you'll, you'll see a future land use map amendment, and if that goes through, then you can argue that it's in compliance with the comprehensive plan because the map's just been a change to allow you to do what you want to do. In this case, the, the future land use map amendment was denied, so then the applicant then took the step of asking for the change based on the fact that there's been major changes in the area that the comprehensive plan did not anticipate.
Questions for Mr. Peterson before I ask Mr.? Good, thank you, Chris, I'm sorry, Devin Port to come up. Okay, Chris, Devin Port represents the applicant, and I think he has some remarks.
Commissioners, good evening. I think you all asked some excellent questions, so if you have similar questions, please ask those. I'll be happy to try to answer them. The two questions I think that the Commission is somewhat concerned about, excuse me. The first one was, could they still build the 24 units that were never developed on the original acreage? And Ben has brought to your attention the concept plan and a few things I want to point out about that. Generally, first of all, it's not necessarily uncommon to get a zoning request that allows for more dense development than what winds up getting put on the ground. And the reason for that is when you start your engineering, you have setbacks, you have maximum lock coverage issues in the zoning ordinance. So sometimes you, you get approval for more units than you end up being able to put on the ground. In this case, when the rezoning happened in 11 for the existing apartments, there was thereafter a detailed development plan that was approved in 12. That is in the record for this hearing. That DDP was approved at 144 units. After that DDP was approved at 144 units, building permits were pulled and those units were constructed. So there are two impossibilities. If, if the concern is that my client intends to construct these 56 and then another 24, there are two impossibilities in that. Number one, that is now contrary to the detailed development plan that was approved. So you couldn't get a permit on it. Number two, you have the physical impossibility that the property has now been developed at 144, and to build 24 units, you're now violating your, your maximum lock coverage, your setbacks. All those things will now pose a physical impossibility. So it is not our intent to, to request these 56 and then come back and build the other 24 we could have all along. From a, I think a Planning Commission's perspective, the reason why Mr. Peterson probably points that out, that these are 32 additional units over what was approved in the past. From a planning perspective, we often get concerned with infrastructure and roadways, and do, do you have the, the capacity to meet the increased demand that a development brings? And so in 11, when these were approved at 160-whatever units, the decision was unequivocally yes, that's not going to be a problem. So from that standpoint, I think the reason why Mr. Peterson brings that up is the additional load, if you will, that's going to serve that access point on Cumberland Trace is the 32 above and beyond what was already approved. I'll get to that more in just a minute, but there was another question about the difference in the two submissions. Do you have any other questions about this additional unit issue? Have I addressed that satisfactorily? Okay. The difference in the two submissions, and I think that question was aimed at comparing the 2015 application with the 17 application. The first thing I want to point out is those were different requests completely. In seven, in 15, excuse me, there was a flume request, and there was a zoning request. The flume request was made, if you look at that application, strictly on the basis, excuse me, the zoning request was made strictly on the basis of flume compliance. In other words, our zoning request was contingent upon the flume request passing. When that did not pass, our request was, I would submit insufficient on its face at that point. So the zone request in 15 never came to a vote. The only vote in 15 was the future land use map amendment, which was denied. Mr. English, I'm sure is going to point out that for a period of time, there was some litigation over that because as Mr. Peterson points out, a flume decision never comes to this body. An applicant who is not happy with a flume decision, their only recourse is circuit court. That case was pulled, we pulled that. We pulled that, and if it's in the record, and the order we all agreed to was, we would not be prejudiced from refiling with the Planning Commission should we so choose. So with this application, we refilled. So the first question is, what's the difference in the two applications? Well, first of all, there was never a vote on the zone amendment in 15. There was in 17, and it's the zone amendment vote that's before you tonight. If we look substantively at the request, this zone recommendation was made based upon KRS 100.213. That's a state law that says zoning, zoning map amendments can be made on the basis of changes in the area, basically since the last zoning. And what the Planning Commission heard that night, that this hearing was held, was that this property's been zoned since 2008. So in a minute, I'm going to talk to you about the differences that the Commission heard about in the area between '08 and today in 17. Many of those you're going to be able to guess. Trace and towards that part of Scottsville Road. But I guess just to circle back, the difference in the two applications, we were asking two different things. A flume was denied in 15, a zone map was never requested. In 17, a zone map was requested on the basis of the Kentucky law, KRS 100.213. I will, I'd clarify one thing Ben said, that vote that brings us here tonight was a five to three vote. I'm not sure it makes much difference, but he stated it was a five to four vote. One commissioner had to recuse, there were eight commissioners that voted, five in favor, three against. So let me just, if I may, then just briefly discuss a few highlights of development. You've heard about the number of units, you've heard it's on 4.3 acres. Commissioner Perigin, pursuant to your question, we agree there is no access on old Scottsville Road, none whatsoever. We will continue to use the same access point that exists, and the transportation cabinet, O'Pine, that's in the record, there's a letter to the, to the planning staff that there are no concerns about traffic, given the current construction of the railway system on Cumberland Trace, so forth and so on. The application calls for a 75% brick material and/or stone. If you look at the apartments at Cumberland Trace Apartments today, Cumberland Trace Village, same design standards. You, it's a case where you know what you're going to build because we've said we're going to build ours, the new ones just like the ones that exist. They'll have the same access to the pool, the full-time manager that's on duty, the full-time maintenance that's on duty, clubhouse, so it's a, what I would consider a higher standard of multifamily development. So what the commission was asked to decide was whether there had been significant changes in the area since 2008. And what the record showed, and I'll just highlight these very briefly, is that since 2008 and up till now, the area, this, this, these parcels are now surrounded by commercial development and multifamily development. So to your point, Commissioner Nash, what are the differences? I've, I've kind of discussed that there were two different questions being asked, but now let me talk about the differences in that area, okay? Even since 15, okay? Even since 15. Since 15, the adjoining parcel at the corner that abuts this property has been rezoned to commercial highway business with the intent to be an ATV dealership. Currently, this is a single-family property that adjoins an ATV dealership, the way it's zoned currently. Since 15, the property immediately across old Scottsville Road has been rezoned commercial and multifamily. The commercial parcels front Cumberland Trace and the multifamily parcels front old Scottsville Road, although Commissioner Perigin, that multifamily will also not have access to old Scottsville Road. The multifamily across the street has been approved for 288 units. That's an RM4 zoning that allows up to three-story, over three-story buildings. So if you ask me, what's the difference since 15, that's what I would point to. That's the development that's been approved encircling this, this property that has drastically changed that area. If I talk about what's happened since '08, as the commission heard, it would include all those changes. It would also include the widening of Cumberland Trace Road, which is now two lanes with a center median turn lane. The intersection of old Scottsville Road's been improved with left turn lanes coming in and coming out. The intersection at Scottsville Road has now been improved. If, if y'all will remember, these improvements happened since 11, and it included the change of the overpass. If you remember the way the overpass used to be, and now we've got that completely different design. In the record of this hearing, Mr. English placed in the record the minutes of the 11 zone change for the current apartments. And if you read those minutes from 2011, Mackeyal testified about those upcoming improvements. They had not happened yet. The interchange improvements hadn't happened, the intersection at Scottsville Road hadn't happened. So folks, to summarize all that, what you have before you is pursuant to state law, a question of, have there been significant changes in that area that makes this requested zone change and use appropriate? That's what the state law reads. And I would submit to you, when that question was posed to the planning commission, they rightly decided five to three that the, the answer to that question is absolutely yes. When, when all the frontage along Scottsville, uh, Cumberland Trace has been rezoned commercial and the areas immediately behind those parcels have been rezoned multifamily, including 288 units across the road, there has obviously been a significant change, not to mention all the changes in the infrastructure, include the improvements to the road. Now, a minute, Mr. English is going to come up, and he's going to articulate some opposition to that. If you look at the minutes, what you'll see is, with the exception of one neighbor, the opposition at our hearing, the planning commission, was from folks who live on out old Scottsville Road. They weren't adjoining property owners, they weren't neighbors of my client. They were folks who essentially said, I don't live next to it, I don't see it from my property, but I have to pass it on my way home. You'll, you'll decide the veracity of that opposition. That being said, on the question before you today, when that opposition was asked at that hearing, what their position was on the application of this state law, the only comment was made is, there haven't been changes on this tract of land. I will submit to you, that is an improper application of the statute. In fact, that discussion was held before the planning commission. The standard is not whether this parcel has changed, because if this parcel had changed to multifamily housing, there'd be no need for a rezoning. The state law asks, have there been changes to the area? And I think I've outlined those consistent with their request. So Mayor, I know that you'll hear from other folks tonight, and I understand you'll give me a brief opportunity to close at the end and maybe address whether there are concerns they might have, and I appreciate that.
Can I ask you a second? Sure that I understand what you're pointing to. Chris, you too, I'm sorry. When you were talking about the, the changes in zoning on Cumberland Trace, is this what you're referring to here?
Yes, sir. So I mentioned that the adjoining property on the corner, this is the ATV, we got to prove it be an ATV dealership, that's this parcel.
That's this lot, not over here, it's on this lot.
This lot right here, on the, what I would, I guess that would be the, the south, the south side of old Scottsville Road.
I'll, I'll show them what we're talking about. I just want to make sure I understood what you're referring to there.
And then the other developments since 15 was, was the rezoning of these three purple lots, commercial, and then these lots right here, multifamily. Now, I heard a comment in the back of the room when I said the property across the road was rezoned multifamily, you'll see on the map, you'll see where the brown extends to. So this, this, this brown right here is the multifamily, 288 units, and these three purple lots are commercial and that part is commercial. It's a floodplain area right here.
Okay.
That's front of old Scottsville Road.
All right, thank you. Give me just a minute so everybody can see what.
Ask a question, Mr. Davenport, while you're doing that.
Sure.
Mr. Davenport, I'm sorry, I was taking notes. Were any of the changes, were any of the zoning changes that you referenced, the ATV dealership and the other three purple commercial properties on our map, that are any of those old Scottsville Road addresses or all of them Cumberland Trace addresses?
I know that, and I'll, and I know that the property across the road had old Scottsville Road address, in fact, they both did. And the reason I know that is, there were signs placed for both those developments, both on Cumberland Trace and both on old Scottsville Road.
Okay.
And the criteria that the planning commission uses is, those signs have to be placed fronting the roadways upon which addresses are implicated by the zone change.
Do you know if with those zoning changes, did they allow for ingress and egress off of old Scottsville Road?
No, the multifamily across the street does not. It uses an entrance off of Cumberland Trace, much like this application would. The ATV dealership, I believe does, but I haven't looked at that, but I believe does because I think there was a security of parking traffic issue with that development that they needed access on both. But Commissioner Nash, I haven't looked at it, so I couldn't swear to it.
Thank you.
Questions for Mr. Davenport? Mr. English?
Members of the commission, I represent several families who live on the old Scottsville Road area. As I'm sure many of you all recognize, this is one of the most scenic parts of our community. It's basically single-family residents. Old Scottsville Road itself is a two-lane narrow road. I, I want to first point out why my clients have so much opposition, and Commissioner Dinning, you, you pointed this out. When this project was first originally proposed, there was an agreement, an informal agreement with a lot of the residents out there, that the property that fronted old Scottsville Road was going to be single-family, low-density property. And the rest of it was going to go ahead and be developed into multifamily property, so that when you turned off old, old Cumberland Trace onto old Scottsville Road, that, what you were going to have was basically single-family residents that would front along that road. And that was the original, more or less, understanding of what the development was going to be. And that's what the binding elements that were originally adopted when this whole project was passed. I know that, that the, the proponent is going to say, well, right across the road, there's multifamily housing that, that was rezoned. But understand that when you look at that, the closest development of any building or parking lot is going to be more than 200 feet from old Scottsville Road. There's a floodplain, you can see that on that property right there. What they are, what MFG is proposing to do is to put a 46,000 square foot parking lot within 13 yards, about the distance from me to you from old Scottsville Road. They're also going to put three 46 tall, 46 feet tall building. Now, they're claiming that they're going to screen that by planting six-foot trees. This doesn't fit that area and it shouldn't be accepted. Now, I want to also disagree a little bit with Mr. Davenport, and, and quite frankly, what he says, the state statute says, and what the local zoning ordinance provides, is not exactly what he says it is. And it's also part of what was presented to the planning commission that shows that this was an error. Typically, when you present a zone change, the first thing you do is you've got to show that the zoning application is in compliance with the comprehensive plan. If it's not, you've got to ask for an amendment to the flume, what's called the flume map, the future land use planning map. In this particular area, the flume map was amended in 2014 to reflect that this was going to be low-density area. That, and that, that was a change that was approved by the planning commission and approved by this commission. In this particular case, as everyone has, has been pointed out, the planning commission voted seven to two that this project was not in compliance with the future land use map. Typically, that ends it. But the applicant in this case got up and argued, oh, well, since 2008, in the zone change that took place, that there have been substantial changes out there. It's not the proper standard. And let me pass out, if I may, to the members of the commission, section 3.10.6 of the zoning ordinance. And what you'll see, what this ordinance provides down in subsection B, if, if you're not in compliance with subsection A, then you can go, you can proceed under subsection B. And what they have, what, but what they have to show and what they have to prove is under sub, paragraph two, and that is that there have been major changes of an economic, physical or social nature within the area involved which were not anticipated in the adopted comprehensive plan, which has substantially altered the basic characteristics of, of this. They argued to the planning commission that you go back and you look at it in 2008, and oh, Cumberland Trace has changed, that whole area's changed. It's not the right standard. The right standard is, you have to look at what's happened since 2014, and they also had to demonstrate to the planning commission that this wasn't contemplated when they adopted it. And it's clear by reason of the fact that it was amended in 2014, that this project was up and built and it was changed so to reflect that these specific lots were going to be low-density, single residential lots. And the planning commission did not consider that, and they did not make the appropriate finding. And that was somewhat based upon the representation that they should go back to 2008 and look. It's not the right standard.
I can interrupt you here, just for the members of the commission, this 3.10.6 A and B is almost word for word from KRS 100-213.
It basically parrots the statute. But understand, it's, it's different. You don't just go back and you look at, well, what happened in 2008. You have to go back and you have to look at what it was at the time the comprehensive plan was adopted. And you have to show evidence that that has changed and that it was not anticipated. This was anticipated, and that's why this, this statute was, or excuse me, this zoning ordinance was inappropriately applied in this particular situation. As I mentioned before, this zoning request simply does not fit within this area of, of our community. It, 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 it is going to, as I said, put this huge parking lot, these three large buildings, right 40 feet from, from old Scottsville Road. It was not the agreement that was reached. This commission should deny this, this zoning change request and give the neighbors what they have requested. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Questions for Mr.?
I have a question.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
I have a quick question. So we're probably the ones that approved this, but when did the apartments across the street on, on Cumberland Trace, the 288 units that are currently zoned to be built in the purplish rusty colored, when were they approved?
I believe that was 2015. But understand, and, and, oh, you know, everyone's saying that that was approved, and you're right, it was. But the development plan shows that that area, and if you look on, on that map, there's a little sort of like pond area, that's a water retention area. There is nothing that's going to be built within 200 feet of old Scottsville Road.
And then when, when was the ATV and the other three commercial lots, when were they approved?
I believe they were also in 2015, about that time. I may not be correct, I'm not real sure about that, but, but also understand that that was part of the comprehensive plan that, that everyone had anticipated, that property along Cumberland Trace was going to be commercial development, it was going to be, you're going to have areas right there, but once you turn off old Scottsville Road, the, the comprehensive plan shows that that area is supposed to be low-density. And that's, that's why we think that you shouldn't necessarily consider the fact that that's changed. That's why we have plans. That's why we, we make these kinds of, of plans and agreements so that we know where our, how it's going to be developed and how we're going to move forward. You mentioned the binding elements from the original deal. Those have just gone away? Well, the, the commission basically voted to accept new binding elements that would allow this to go forward. Those binding elements were basically for single, low-density, you could have a driveway on to, they were going to be single-family estate-type lots, there were basically three lots that, that were developed with also a, a water retention area that, that's part of it. But yeah, the, the, that basically, the whole deal has now gone away because the commission voted to change the binding elements.
And was it the same property owner?
Yeah. No, no. The property changed hands, and I believe in 2012, it was, it, the owner of the property now is a large, multi, it's MFG. They own property all over, I think, the United States. Large, multifamily ownership. At that time, it was, this property was originally developed by Harris Pepper, Christian Volkert, and one other gentleman, and I can't remember his name off the top of my head. They were basically, now, they did come forth, I believe it was in 2015, and file an application to amend the binding, but they, after, after, they never proceeded anywhere. They basically withdrew that. They didn't go to a hearing. It was withdrawn after they, well, why they did it, I can't really say, but I think they knew there was going to be significant opposition to this.
I have one other question.
Sure.
You said in 2014 that the flume was amended for low-density development. You said by this commission, but I understood Ben to say is that we don't, we don't amend...
That's part of the comprehensive plan that's developed, and it was a county-wide, basically, remapping as to what took place. And to make that property consistent, it, at that time, the flume, the Future Land Use Map, was amended in conjunction with the comprehensive plan to reflect that this was going to be low-density property.
And that came before this commission?
I believe that is, yes.
Yeah, the comprehensive plan would come before the commission in the fiscal court. Ben's shaking his head, no.
I mean, I understood he said that we did not have say in amending the Future Land Use Map. I just want to clarify that.
The commission, and I may have misspoken on the...
When we say commission, sometimes we're talking planning and zoning, and sometimes, it does get...
The commission approved the comprehensive plan. The flume is part, the Future Land Use Map is basically developed by the planning commission and I think approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Do you have a, for you, do you have something to add to that, Mr. Moore? Is it...
Please.
The flume amendment in 2014 was approved by the planning commission. It did not come before the city commission.
And if I misstated, and please don't consider what I, if I misstated that before.
But if there were changes, and I want to make sure, I want to ask that again, but if there were changes to the comprehensive plan, the comprehensive plan changes would come before the commission, which could potentially include a flume.
The state statute prevents the comprehensive plan policy elements to be amended by the planning commission alone.
Right.
The state statute requires that if the goals and objectives of the comprehensive plan are amended, then it has to go to the respective legislative bodies. So, you're right, it does have to come before the commission if there's an amendment to the goals and objectives. In this case, the flume is not a part of the goals and objectives, but rather a part of the policy plan, and so can be amended only by vote of the, only, by, only a vote of the planning commission.
Yeah. One other thing that I wanted to say. I don't know about the ATV dealership, and I don't know about the other commercial properties, but to answer Commissioner Paragin's, the multi-unit development across the street was on January the 3rd of 2017, because it was my first meeting on the commission, and that's when we approved that particular project. Did you, and I'm asking a question somebody's already asked, I apologize. Did you say that the original binding elements indicated that these lots would only be single-family residential?
They said low-density estate-type houses is what the, and I have those, they're part of the record in the exhibits that were introduced at the...
And I believe you've already answered it, but for me, because I don't, I didn't understand it, what happened to those binding elements?
Well, the commission voted to amend those to allow, to basically do away with them and to oppose new binding elements that would allow the construction of these additional units and so forth on this particular tract of property.
Jeff from Mr. English. I have some questions for Ben, some follow-up questions for Ben. Thank you.
There are some individuals here who live in the neighborhood that would like to address the commission also.
All right, sir, thank you. Peterson, would you mind coming back up first? I'm going to ask you some questions. The comprehensive plan created the flume.
Flume is a Future Land Use Map, and the Future Land Use Map chapter an element of the comprehensive plan, yes.
Okay. You like, that's the same way of stating it, but I understand.
Yes, it is.
Okay. And if the flume has a way of being amended, which it does, it has to meet one of three criteria, as I understand it, or maybe all three criteria?
Yes, their LU 114 outlines the process for amending the Future Land Use Map.
So, if, if the comprehensive plan, if the flume is a part of the comprehensive plan, and within the comprehensive plan it allows for amendment of the flume, then why use the KRS statute?
Because that is an option. So, there's basically two options when considering a land-use map amendment or a zoning map amendment. And those are basically, those are basically the two options. You're either in compliance with the Future Land Use Map and comprehensive plan, or there have been significant changes in the area that the comprehensive plan did not anticipate, therefore, we're changing it for that reason.
And were these, were the three, if I remember them all correctly, were the three changes that Mr. Davenport said, excuse me, were not anticipated, the ATV dealership, the, and the three other commercial properties, were those not anticipated by the flume or the comprehensive plan?
So, the, again, a bit of a disadvantage since I wasn't here, but, so, the comprehensive plan, those changes were made in 2014. The ATV dealership rezoning was done in 2015 to be in compliance with the comprehensive plan. And then, the apartment complex across Old Scottsville Road was done in 2017, same thing, it was in compliance with the comprehensive plan. So, so that is, for those two particular applications, the record is that those were anticipated by the comprehensive plan. The argument here is, is that those, those changes for this particular piece of property were not anticipated in, for this property in this area. So, it's a complicated...
I feel like my colleague, Commissioner Denning, where I want to say, I want to ask you yes or no questions.
Okay. Go right ahead.
And that is, was the ATV dealership zoned for an ATV dealership before or after the comprehensive plan?
After.
And was the flume changed in order to be able to do that?
I'd have to look at the record. But I'm assuming no.
And then I would ask the same questions about the other properties on the north side of the intersection. I can't remember if it's two or three that are now zoned commercial. And were they zoned commercial then? And did they have to be? Yeah, there are three. And did they, did they have, thank you, Joe, did they have to be, did the flume have to be changed for their zoning as well?
No flume change was required for any of those commercial properties fronting Cumberland Trace, nor the other properties that are now multifamily development being constructed.
So, if that's the case, if there was no change to the flume, were they, in fact, changes not anticipated by the comprehensive plan?
The planning commission says yes. Or, no, I'm confused now, too. But, yes, so the planning commission has said that for this particular application, that the changes were not anticipated by the comprehensive plan, which the most recent adoption was 2014.
Which doesn't make sense to me if they, if they were already zoned that way, and so they, so they were already part of the flume. I'm sorry to be, I feel like I'm beating a dead horse, but I keep waiting for some light to go off that shows me that I'm wrong, and that there is somehow a change that wasn't anticipated. And at this point, I can't see how it was not anticipated. And if I ask you a yes or no question about were they or were they not anticipated, you're going to tell me to ask the planning commission.
It's their decision to make the recommendation to you, which you have the final decision, so you get to make that decision.
Question for Mr. Davenport.
Would you like to hear a thought I have about the last question you asked?
Sure.
The question you asked Ben was, and he's probably at a bit of disservice because he wasn't here for this, but you asked whether there are any flume amendments associated with those other two zone change. I'm 99% sure, if you look at the map, those properties across the way, the commercial flume designation extended far enough south from Cumberland Trace that a portion of the multifamily development across the way had to be re-flumed from commercial to multifamily or moderate density to allow for that division of that land. When the flume came out in 14, commercial extended on, all along the south side of Cumberland Trace for a certain depth into Old Scottsville Road. That was moved up to comport with the multifamily rezoning that took place in the meantime. The other kind of thing that's going unsaid here, commissioners, and I don't know how you bake this into the cake, but the flume is a funny thing. And the flume, we're often get told by the planning commission, is they don't assume that the flume, the properties will be developed consistent with the flume. That's why we have the flume change, and we have that whole process, and we even get zone changes. If you want to develop a property consistent with the flume, you don't have a necessary green light. You still have to come to the planning commission and get approval for that. We have seen development requests consistent with the flume be turned down by the planning commission. So, to the extent that the question is, is anything consistent with the flume anticipated? I would argue against that necessarily. Number two, what you probably haven't been told yet, unless you dug really deep in this record, is that when the complan, when the flume came out in 14, it followed the rezoning request by Mr. Volkert in 13. Now, we've heard talk about this double-secret agreement, except Mr. Volkert came here in 13 and asked to rezone that property. It was filed, it was put on an agenda, and then it was pulled. Following that request, and I'll tell you, at the time of that request, the property's flume designation was commercial. The same property we're talking about today, that Mr. English has championed as it's been designated low-density. Not always. At one time, it was designated commercial on the flume. Following the retraction of that motion, of that application, this property was re-flumed to take a noun and make it into a verb, I don't know if that's proper, but it got a new flume designation, not by act of this body, but by the planning commission, from commercial all the way to low-density. Now, there was testimony before the planning commission last month about why that happened. No one really knows. It's a statement of fact that it happened in conjunction with what's called a large census tract, where the planning commission looks at a large area of the county, in this case, it was the Plano Road, Scottsville Road, Cumberland Trace area. It was the only property that got what we call a downflume. The other changes in that census was to modify low-density into moderate density because of the need for more multifamily housing in the area. This property, for some strange reason, went from commercial to low-density. The only explanation that was ever offered was, well, that made it consistent with its current zoning, which Mitch Hurt, Miss Hurt, planning commission staff member, basically admitted on the record makes no sense. Because if the flume is consistent with the current zoning, what is the use of the flume? We don't need a flume if the flume was intended to comport with the current zoning. So, I've gone a long way around the horn, Commissioner Nash, and I haven't even asked for your question yet. But on those issues that you ask, I think those are very poignant points.
So, if I take your argument, playing devil's advocate, if it extended commercial down there and it had to be changed in order to allow multifamily, then why should we continue to allow multifamily? And why wouldn't we say we've offered, we've allowed enough multifamily in that particular area? And that there, that there are no, if I read the words right, that the changes were anticipated, or whether they weren't is irrelevant if we've already allowed it?
First point I'll make, so you all understand, I believe that property across the way was actually zoned PUD, which is a planned unit development, which is actually, as I recall, separate apart from, that's its own, that's a very unique situation. There is no PUD on the flume.
I'm sorry, I thought you meant the existing development.
Yes, sir.
Were you going the other direction?
I was talking about across the street. Yes, sir.
I'm sorry. I thought you meant the development that your company already owns.
The only reference I made in this back and forth was when that flume was serendipitously changed in 15, or, excuse me, in 14, that was our property. And I'll tell you, that's done without notice to an owner, that's done without a public hearing with advertise, I mean, I think there is technically some advertisement, but it was done as a huge tract of land, okay? Your question was, help me recall it.
It really does. My question essentially is, if we've allowed the development that your company owns, that you represent, that they own...
And they're present tonight, I didn't introduce them, but they are present.
And the other large multifamily...
The slippery slope argument. That's what I would call that. What keeps that from extending further on, further on, further on? And that is, when you get down to it, I think that is probably a lot of the concerns for the neighbors that live on out that road, frankly. And I understand that. What keeps that from happening is a few things. Number one, those requests have to be made to the planning commission. They are the first gatekeeper. They're the first gatekeeper. What this development and this request has that none other will have is this argument. Under the comp plan, under our zoning ordinance, under our zoning policies, there's a preference for what's called buffering of uses. And our comp plan says that commercial and single-family uses in adjoining properties are non-compatible. They should be buffered, just like industrial properties shouldn't sit next to multifamily properties. We try to put commercial properties in between those uses. In this case, we serve as the buffer between the commercial development that's happened since 15 and the single-family residences that extend on further down Scottsville Road, Old Scottsville Road. That's the first reason. The second reason is, we are the only property in that area currently that can make the pledge of no access of traffic upon Old Scottsville Road. If you look what's happened across the road, that property was unique in that it could meet both of those criteriaso. It was buffering the commercial development on the frontage of Cumberland Trace with the single-family development out Old Scottsville Road, and it was able to make a commitment of no multifamily traffic on Old Scottsville Road. This request completely mirrors that request in those aspects. So, I...
Other than the closeness?
That's, well, if you look in, if you look in our file, in this record, you'll see pictures, and if you've driven out Old Scottsville Road, you all are aware of the current expanse between Old Scottsville Road and the current structures. There's basically a vacant field there, where my client's asking to build these structures. What he's also committed to, and I didn't probably touch on this as much as I should have, is a 40-foot-wide landscape buffer that's extremely more dense than the landscaping ordinance requires, and requires them to plant those plantings at a height of six feet at planting, which I would argue does much more visually to buffer the aesthetics in that, however long that drive is, as you turn on Old Scottsville Road, than what's currently there. And what's currently there is perfectly compliant with the zoning ordinance. They don't, they don't have to make a single change with what's there right now. So, that's a commitment they've made in trying to make that response. Now, the apartment, multifamily across the way, they didn't agree to that same type of buffer, really because no one showed up to oppose that development. So, again, and I'll take Mr. English, I haven't done the math, he says that development sits 200 feet off the road with a drainage easement in between, which, again, is no visual buffer. We will be closer than that, but we will be adding that significant cost and that significant visual buffer as well. visual buffer as well, as an attempt to mitigate.
And these buildings would be three stories.
That, I've actually got to correct that. There is one three-story building in the plan. So when he said that there would be three 42-foot, that's not technically correct, and I mean, it's a detail, but I do want to correct it. The plan does call for one, and it's the building immediately most adjacent to the ATV dealership, as close to Cumberland Trace Road as you can put it.
Across the street is pretty important.
Yes. And he's right. There is a drain adjustment, but that will do nothing. I mean, when those, and if you've been out there, that's under development. That DDP's been approved, those building permits have been granted, significant dirt work going on as we speak.
If, and this may just be strategy, and if it is, just tell me it's strategy or tell me it's none of my business. You asked for the change in the flume first. If the flume wasn't, if the change in the flume wasn't necessary, then why ask for it at all?
Part of it is strategy, and part of this will be my opinion, Commissioner Nash. So take that with a grain of salt, and some will tell you don't take it at all. First of all, since 14, since the flume came into being, number one, that's been the standard procedure. And so I guess there's some inertia. When you keep doing, when you've done things one way, there's a tendency to keep doing them that way, number one. Number two, and this is where my opinion comes in. The request to amend the flume, in my opinion, is probably a bit more subjective. It's probably a little bit less, it's probably more vague, whatever you want to call it. And number two, that decision is not reviewable by this board. So if you go to the planning commission, you ask for a flume amendment, and it's granted, their ability to overturn the zoning is extremely difficult, if you follow my logic. So the reason you typically ask for the flume is because they're the court of last resort, so to speak. And once you get that flume amendment, it's much more difficult. If you get a flume amendment and this body still rejects the zoning change, in my opinion, you've got a very strong case across the street, because the commission was the final arbiter of the flume, if that makes sense. So in this case-
Street, you mean circuit court?
Circuit court.
Okay.
Yes, sir. In this case, what's, you don't get this from the minutes, but what's very, I think, interesting about this case is, when the flume was denied, and Mr. Moore asked, do I wish to pers- yes, sir.
Going to go if you're going straight from the minutes.
I'm sorry. That's fair enough. Yes, sir. I'll stick to the answer to the question. Hopefully answer the question, Commissioner Nash.
Yes. One final question, and I, Mr. Davenport, I think a lot of you saw, I'm not trying to be argumentative with you. Is this a way to circumvent the existing comprehensive plan and rules by utilizing this KRS statute?
I'll say this, I'm not sure it's a way to circumvent. Maybe you could argue that, but what I would argue is, if it is, so be it. There's not much we can do about. The state law, your commissioners, you all understand this, state law is state law. And our General Assembly has said that is a means by which to rezone property. We can, as a local government, enact a comprehensive plan that allows for other means, but we can't get rid of the edict from the General Assembly. So I don't see it as necessarily circumventing, but we don't have the option of ignoring it, would be my response to that.
Questions for Mr. Davenport? All right. I want to give those individuals who've had their, who've provided testimony or comments before planning and zoning. I'm sorry. Yeah, we'll take a five-minute break, if you don't mind. Okay, we're back in session, and we're at the point in our hearing where citizens who wanted to address the commission will have that opportunity. I will tell you, just as I spoke to Mr. Davenport, he was about to stray from the minutes or the record that we had, only those people who presented evidence or spoke at the original commission hearing would be allowed to speak, and their comments need to stay generally with what they brought up at the time of the meeting, essentially a summarization of the remarks. So if there's anybody that wanted to speak, this would be the time. Dr. Morgan, Jeffrey Morgan.
Hello. My name is Jeff Morgan. I represent friends of Old Scottsville Road here in town. I've lived in this community for 60 years. We've been fighting this. It's our third round. We've put a lot of time, a lot of money in. It's wearing us out. We're kind of tired of the whole issue. Our whole point, it seems to continually come up that we didn't oppose these apartments and those apartments. We have not opposed anything that fronted Cumberland Trace. We have only opposed things that encroach upon Old Scottsville Road to the degree that this does. This is 40 feet, a little bit further than that wall, maybe. If you all look at a map, we've had three wrecks out there in the last month. This is a curvy, hilly road, and they're promising this nice barrier, trees, we're going to block these big buildings. But I can guarantee you, you're building in a blind curve in both directions. This road commonly floods, it ices, there are accidents there all the time. We presented these evidence and pictures to the planning and zoning, I'm not going to go over that again.
They're in our packet.
Okay. That's why I represent about 150 people with this group. That's why we haven't come and opposed these other things. We know Bowling Green's growing, and we appreciate it. And I appreciate Mr. Danning's confusion. We sat for two, two and a half hours and listened to witnesses debate evidence, everything, and watched this planning and zoning commission do the right thing. They voted seven to one in our favor. While we were celebrating, I think the man, the reporter from Park City called it tricky lawyering, or something like that. I just called it trickery. The questions seemed to be changed into a different form, and I know a couple of the planning and zoning fellows, I'm not even sure if they knew what they were voting for. They'd been there over five hours, and the wording was changed twice. There was a motion, then it didn't get a second, and there was, it was very confusing for everybody. And I've dealt with well over 100 people, comments are all furious about the whole event and don't understand it. So I'm with you. I'm confused. We're all confused. And all we're asking is to do the right thing, and so you know where we stand. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, Dr. Moore. Someone else that would like to address the commission? Dr. Buskey?
Thank you for the opportunity to speak in front of the commission. I'm hoping I can turn some light bulbs on. And fortunately, unfortunately, I've become the historian in this area. I guess I've been there longer than anybody. I've been living out Old Scottsville Road for 30 years now, and so I've watched the area change. And so a couple of things I want to bring up. One is, we are a group of very pro-growth, pro-Bowling Green, pro-Warn County people. I helped start American Bank. I was chairman of that bank for many years. A lot of the people in our group are developers, builders, so we're very aware of flumes and zoning and, flumes and zoning and the development of Warren County and Bowling Green. So we're very pro that. The difference here is, this body tonight, whether it's quasi-judicial, political, legal, is hearing a lot of legal distraction. Mr. Davenport's excellent at that. And that's kind of what happened the other night. Dr. Morgan brought up a great point. We were there for almost four hours. At the end of the meeting, there was some trickery there, and it came in, and the vote changed, and it was in our favor, and it was presented a different way. But the reality is, we've known all along that there would be commercial development on Cumberland Trace. We knew there'd be apartments. And in our meetings, there was not a double-secret, triple-secret meeting. I met with Christian Volker and the other gentlemen that were developing the apartments, along with many of the other people that are here tonight were in those meetings. So there's no secrecy to them. We just had a business meeting and said, we will not oppose your rezoning if you'll follow these parameters. And Christian, and Harris Pepper, and Dean Montgomery was the developer who is also developing the other side of the road. So it's still the same group of people. And when this very first started years and years ago, David Broderick was our attorney, and we were in opposition of this. The deal was set that they would not build those apartments up against Old Scottsville Road. And we would not oppose the rezoning into multifamily, because we knew that Cumberland Trace was going to get developed. And all along, we knew it was in the flume, and we knew that that development would be there. But this is different. You know, this is not the original deal we had. They're asking for more apartments than were originally approved, and they're putting them right up against Old Scottsville Road. It's a very dangerous road. It's totally inappropriate for the safety of the citizens and for the, you know, we're not a group of people that are just like, hey, don't put this in my backyard. I mean, we're very aware of what's going on out there. And we're asking you, as representatives of the citizens, to balance an error that's been made of planning and zoning. You know, this is a beautiful community. It's a beautiful county. Y'all have done a great job. And we want to keep it that way and balance the development. We understand they're trying to get as much dollar per square foot as they possibly can, but at what cost? They've already bought it. They're making good profit off of it. You know, it's just the wrong thing to do. And as representatives of the citizens, we want y'all to look at this closely and just do the right thing for the people of Warren County and Bowling Green. I think that's really what I want to say. And I appreciate the time. Thank you so much.
Questions for him?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Oh, okay.
Ms. Murphy?
I'm Mike Murphy, and I live at 925 Old Scottsville Road.
I'm Mike Murphy and I live at 925 Old Scottsville Road. I won't repeat the things that Olish said, but I agree with all the things he said. Were in the meetings that he referred to and that is one of the reasons there was an agreement that that property would be residential. And I agree with, we all realize development along Cumberland Trace, no doubt. But Old Scottsville Road, single family from where the first house is now, all the way to Alvin. And just the residents that, from the bridge back towards Cumberland Trace, there's 800 to 900 homes that use that road coming back to Old Scottsville Road. And one of the points that I had brought up at the commission meeting was, this parking lot, again, as somebody mentioned, is about between here and the wall, distance to the edge of the parking lot. This parking lot is to accommodate, I think, 130, 140 vehicles, okay? That is two and a half football fields long. You take half of a football field wide, two and a half football fields long. It's what you have running along Old Scottsville Road. Now, as you know, Old Scottsville Road has seven 25 mile an hour curves in a half mile stretch, starting right at this property out. And so you have the flow of those cars for this parking lot pulling into this parking lot. And on both ends of Old Scottsville Road, their headlights are going to be shining in the cars that are coming up and down Old Scottsville Road. And this is just, it's a dangerous situation. It's just, you know, it goes back to what the original agreement was, was that they would build their apartments over where they are now and this would be marketed and sold as residential. And, you know, it just, to me, you know, what you guys come and do, I know you get paid, but you get paid very little for what you have to do. The planning and zoning folks, you know, are volunteer group and, you know, they do a great job at what they do. But we're all are just citizens trying to protect each other in Bowling Green, Warren And we do the best we can do, but I think all of us could say when we act as that, you know, we're volunteers doing the best we can. We're not necessarily trained at what we're doing. That night at the commission meeting, and I hope you watched it or watched the video of it, you know, they did the right thing on the first vote. And then when things changed and Chris brought up a new situation, a new point, it was clear the commission was confused. We sat right here for 10 or 15 minutes in silence. They didn't know what to do. And finally, you know, somebody had to do something and I truly feel a motion was made and everybody was under pressure and I just think it went the wrong way. Because they tried to do the right thing with the first vote and I just truly believe they got confused on the second. They're just trying to do the best they can do to represent us folks from Warren County. And the folks, the new owners of this, they knew what they bought. They bought a complex and they bought land that was zoned residential. And that's what we agreed to years ago. And everything out, Old Scottsville Road is residential and it needs to remain there. It doesn't need to start creeping out that way or lend itself to making Old Scottsville Road more dangerous than what it is. And I had said before, we had done a count on the homes and I know Chris mentioned, you know, hey, a lot of us just pass by, you know, every day. Well, it's more than that. It's our neighborhood, you know? I live within 3,000 foot of that facility and my family travels that road and so does 900 other families. And so if something like that starts creeping back and it devaluates our properties to 900 homes, you know, you're getting into, you're getting into easy nine, $10 million worth of property value. But that's just, that's a side note. It's the earlier things that we spoke of that are so important. So that's what I have to say. Thank you.
Questions? Would there be anybody else in the room that wants to speak? Yes, sir?
My name is Richard Collins. My wife actually talks in front of the planning and zoning and she's not capable of doing it. So if you don't mind, I'd just like to make two or three points that didn't come up.
I can't consider anything that wasn't there. You did not, if you didn't speak, I see Ms. Gretchen Collins. And we have a summary of her comments on here as well.
I just, I have some notes that she made to talk, but.
I'm sorry, unfortunately, that's the rules that we have to operate under. Would there be anyone else? Anyone else at all?
Just briefly reemphasize, in addition to the aesthetics, which are the only thing they mentioned that I said the last meeting, you know, east of I-65 is the area we're talking about, Cumberland Trace. And that's a four and a half mile road that goes from Cemetery down to Scottsville Road. And there are two, all the 900 families that live down, Old Scottsville, and all the people that live in all the small, single-family developments along Cumberland Trace and out Cemetery Road, the only way they have to get into Bowling Green is on Cemetery Road or Scottsville Road from Cumberland Trace. So as you continue to hear before you all these plans to develop more and more and more, think about the fact that Scottsville Road itself is a two-lane highway and I come up and down it every single day. And very, very often, it turns into a one-lane highway because when you get to the turnoff for the Sam's Club area, the car is back up into the lane, on the left lane of Scottsville Road, and people cannot go past there, so y'all have to go into the right lane. Now you're getting into the place where very often, when you're making, the left turn lane that goes to Cumberland Trace from Scottsville Road is also backed up way back, turning Scottsville Road into a one-lane highway and sometimes backing up to the I-65 entrances. So the more, you know, high-density things you allow to go out there, where there's this four and a half foot mile barrier that will not allow people to go anywhere but on these two exits, you're asking for trouble. And people who moved out on the east side of I-65 moved out there because they wanted to be in the country. They wanted that aesthetic. They didn't want the downtown Bowling Green, you know, living type, which is, nothing wrong with it, but people who move out there wanted that. And when you start saying it doesn't matter when you're going to have all these apartments and all this busyness in the parking lots and the cars facing us, it's a big difference. And I don't live where I'm going to see the apartments, but I go past there three and four times a day and it is my neighborhood. So I just wanted to, you know, reemphasize that.
I couldn't take comments from you. Anyone else in the room? Anyone else? Mr. English, do you have summarization?
I don't want to take more time than is necessary. I would like to refer you back to the ordinance that I gave you a copy of. It's 3.10.6. And when you look at the facts that have to be established and the findings that this commission needs to make in order to go forward under the ordinance that MFG has chosen, there has to be proof of not just changes, but major changes of an economic, physical, or social nature which were not anticipated in the comprehensive plan and which have substantially altered the basic character of such area. When you look at this as Old Scottsville Road, those facts have not been established. That comprehensive plan, when it was adopted and to, when the comprehensive plan was adopted and when the flume was adopted as part of that, this was anticipated. And we would ask that this commission reject this, the commission's finding and make findings that are consistent with the ordinance. Thank you.
Davenport, do you have a closing?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, commissioners, for your attention tonight. Y'all have long agendas. I will echo what Mr. Murphy said for what y'all get paid. It's amazing the work y'all do. When you come to a hearing like this, at the end of a long agenda, some of the questions you ask, it's obvious that you are not hearing a vacuum of information. You've looked over this material. You have some idea of what we're debating, which means you're putting in even additional time. So I appreciate that. Frankly, good questions make for good presentations. So I appreciate that. I also don't want to blabber every point, but let me start by saying this. There was a word used a couple times, trickery, okay? And I want to point out a few things to make sure we're clear. There was no trickery done before this planning commission. In the record is the application. If I may, just so y'all can see this, Mayor, if I may approach, I want to point this out to you. This is the application that was filed before the planning commission. And if you look at that, you feel free to pass it on down. The grounds upon which that zoning application was requested was upon two grounds. That wasn't filled out the night of the planning commission. That was filled out weeks in advance. That is the application that gets published. That's the application that you can get from the zoning office. That's the application that gets put on the agenda. When we appear for this planning commission meeting, that was the application I had filed on behalf of my client. Who I might add, if Mr. Miller would stand up and his partner would stand up, they've come in from Colorado tonight. They were here at the planning commission, at least Mr. Miller was. So there was no trickery. There was no who-doing. There was no changing of the issue. That's what was noticed before the commission. In response to that argument, this was the only argument made in opposition. And I'm going to quote Mr. English, who had those proceedings transcribed by a court reporter. "The evidence presented tonight demonstrates that there have been no changing, no changes of a significant economic nature on this particular tract. And that is the reason for this commission to deny the zone change request." Thank you. Now who's changed the arguments? Who's changed the goal line? When this body convenes, it is, as the mayor's pointed out, it's reviewing a record that has been made. That was the opposition. If there was a misstatement or misapplication of the statute, it wasn't by my client. I would argue it was by the opposition when they said the only thing of relevance was the tract. Who I will stand by is Mr. Hampt Moore. And what's not been pointed out is that among the opposition, they talked about all the confusion before the body. I think they're underselling Mr. Moore's assistance and I think they're underselling the diligence of that body. If you look at those minutes, Mr. Moore read the statute verbatim and he discussed how that statute isn't fact, Mayor, codified in our ordinance. He read them verbatim, the standard to be applied. Was there silence? Yes, there was. There was silence when Commissioner Warren, who sits right here, Commissioner Dinning, he uses your seat or you use his seat. Y'all can fight that out some other time. I understand. Yes, sir.
I knew that was coming. Just set him up, Mr. Davenport. He'll knock him out of the park all night long.
When he was asked to remit his motion to reflect the statute, all you had to do was say yes. And he said, "I'll let it die for a lack of second." I don't assume that body didn't know what they were doing and I think it's improper for us to assume that. I believe after Mr. Moore explained that there's more than one way to skin a cat and the state provides a standard of review, I don't think anybody on that board could voice that motion, given the changes that had occurred. Now tonight, a little bit of a moving goal line. We're no longer arguing the opposition not saying that, "Oh, you just look at this tract." They're saying, "Okay, yeah, okay, you got to look bigger, but let's not talk about oh eight, let's talk about 14." Let's talk about 14, if that's what we want to talk about. Because we've still got all the other changes that have been made surrounding this property. So again, I'll stand with Mr. Moore. He correctly advised his client of the legal standard and they decided based upon that in a five to three vote. The other issues you've heard about tonight, that body heard about, traffic, the state, the city said there are no concerns about traffic. We can talk about Old Scottsville Road, there's no access on Old Scottsville Road. The last thing I'll say is, I'll remind you of the buffer, that the buffer, not just the visual buffer, and I think some of the opposition said, "Well, there'll be trees. You can't plant trees in right of way." I think we all know that. The state controls part of that, can't do that. But the purpose of the 40-foot buffer is not to put trees in the right of way, it's to visually buffer the property to try to address those concerns. And Commissioner Nash, your point is another type of buffer and that's buffering the development. There is no other property that can commit to no access on Old Scottsville Road. Whether this property goes forward or not, there'll be no multifamily access on Old Scottsville Road, just like there's not across the road. So it's a buffer, not only visually, but of uses and of access. For all those reasons, I think that planning commission was right when they looked at the question presented by state law as defined and explained by Mr. Moore and finding there were significant changes in the area. I would ask for you all, on behalf of my client, that you all so agree and pass the first reading of the ordinance. Thank you all very much for the time.
Are there any other questions before we proceed? Any comments that you'd like to make, one way or another?
I'm going to make a quick comment. Appreciate you all recognizing that we're not, you know, this isn't a career thing that we're here to help and guide the community. And I will say that I'm not going to speak for these guys, but these are the hardest things that we hear. This is, these are the toughest things that come before us and, you know, there's two sides to everything, so I just wanted to say that. It's very difficult to make these decisions. I guess Slim doesn't agree, but.
No. As is our practice, we always put on the agenda to vote in a positive fashion. If that vote fails, then we come back with a motion to deny. If you do that, it'll have to be based on, I forgot what page. I marked that down and forgot. There's a. What page is that on, Ben? If there is a denial later, do you know?
It's on the minutes, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
It's on page 18. You're talking about the language of the statute.
Yes, sir.
It's page 18, which is the final page.
All right, so again, an affirmative vote here is to approve the rezoning based on the record that you heard and the summarizations that you heard this evening. And a no vote would be to deny that recommendation. Any questions about that? Please call the roll.
Williams?
No.
Dinning?
No.
Nash?
No.
No.
Perigin?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
That means that the recommendation has not been approved, or the recommendation from Planning and Zoning has not been approved, and we can't leave it there. We have to have a motion to deny. Did you find the language?
I did not.
It would be here, other than... etc., in order to prove it would be denied. Okay. Is that page 18?
That is page 18 now.
Help me, help me.
No, you're on the wrong.
On the wrong 18?
No, it's from March. You got to go back to the December meeting.
He's looking at the action language, Mayor.
Sir?
Yeah, he's looking at the action language at the end.
Yes, sir.
Yeah. To override, like I said, I suggest you need a new ordinance entirely, because you need to come up with your own independent findings and conclusion about now why you're going to find alternate findings of fact and conclusions that the planning commission did. And you're right, from the record, the testimony and the record at the planning commission hearing, you need to find that there have not been major changes of an economic, fiscal, or social nature within the area involved which were not anticipated in the adoptive comprehensive plan and which have substantially altered the basic character of the area. So you need to come up with your own facts supporting the fact that there have not been such changes as stated in that statutory language and their findings. Does that help you?
So we need to specifically state the changes, the changes that have not occurred?
Well, I think it would help your cause, particularly because you're going to be under probably a next stage after this one. So you have to make your own findings, and the findings on this one's a little different than we've done in the past, because the finding's going to be kind of simple, that there have not been the major changes, and the other language goes through it. I think what would help you in the ordinance to do that, if from the record, if now to support that, if you can come up with some factual findings supporting your conclusion that there have not been such changes, again, based upon the record made before the planning commission, you know, the testimony there, the tape there, whatever language you can come up with, but I think it would be help your, it'd help your findings if you could come up with at least two or three findings or one or two, you know, how many you want, to support your conclusion that there have not been changes. And as we said before, don't forget, tonight's vote is just the first reading of this one. This one will be back on the agenda at the next meeting as well. Yeah, and...
All of that has to be put in this motion? Can't the motion just state that we find that there is no change?
I think the probably better idea would be doing a new ordinance, because this one will be back on the agenda again. So I think normally what we have done in the past, there's been two ordinances, this one that if you deny it on the second one, that will be the deciding vote. Remember, tonight's vote is not a determining vote, it's just a first reading. But I think if you want to, you can come up in the ordinance tonight. If you want to stop, we can probably, maybe we can, but you guys got to come up with the facts and not us. But I think may have to defer to Hampt, how much time? I think we've got plenty of time, but probably if you want to, we can come up with a ordinance denying for first reading at the next meeting, if people can give me some facts that we can put in that ordinance to support it. I'm not sure this is something you have to do tonight, because we've got 90 days from their action, take final action here.
I can go through the record now. It's just going to take some time to pull out the pieces. I have several questions that have written down here that formulated, and answers that were given that formulated my opinion, but I'm going to have to go through the record, which is going to take some time.
Yeah, that's why I said, I think, you know, maybe the better idea would be have just another ordinance denying for first reading at the next agenda, if that's acceptable to the board.
Acceptable to me.
I agree with it. So the anticipation of a new ordinance denying the recommendation on the next agenda, which is, would be the first reading on February 6th, February 6th. Okay. All right. Okay, we're ready to get one more to go here tonight. All right. First reading of ordinance BG 2018 number eight.
Ordinance rezoning real estate. Ordinance rezoning tracks of land containing 9.81 acres from HB Highway Business and RM3 Multifamily Residential to PUD Planned Unit Development located at 302 Morgantown Road and 1748 Holly Drive, presently owned by Tabo Landing LLC, Shannon Basham, Rodolfo Vlad, and William Cunningham with the Vincino Group LLC as contract vendee. And if I've mispronounced any of that, I apologize.
Question by Perigin, second by Denning. This is a first reading of a recommendation from Planning and Zoning on an eight-to-one vote for multifamily. Are there any questions or comments? Please call the roll.
Williams?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Perigin?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Sir? Any change or comments? Yeah, we can do that. Who you want?
Commissioner Nash asked if we could take the public comments now, if you wanted to do that, if you have a comment that you'd like to make for the commission, this will be your time to do that. No? Yes? No?
Hopefully, we can all take a deep breath. All right. All right. Hi, everybody. My name is Frances Wilson. I live 1350 Kentucky Street. If you remember, last, two weeks ago, I talked about the stress that not reconsidering and not proposing a new fairness ordinance has done on me, as well as people in my community around me. But I want to share a little bit more about myself, and also a little bit more about my own story and why I'm here. After graduating high school in Akron, Ohio, and after living about a year abroad in Beijing, I finally discovered it was time for me to take the next step in my education, and that was university. Being a top-level Mandarin Chinese speaker and also just completing a national security scholarship program with the United States Department of State, I was scouring all over the United States for the best Chinese programs available. And after visiting WKU and Bowling Green, I was like, this is where I want my next home to be. I took a risk coming here, and I left a lot of friends and colleagues in China and a lot of family in Akron to come here. And what I don't tell many people is that I also came here from Beijing. I brooded my life there to come here, because I'm deeply interested in the South. I'm a nerd for America, if you will. And I also want to get to know a part of this, a part of this, part of the country that not many people from my hometown come to. I want to make it more of my own and make it more of my home. But honestly, it's been really hard to call Bowling Green my home. I fear that if I'm living off of campus, that I might be kicked out onto the street and I have nowhere to live because my landlord thinks that or found out that I was a member of the LGBT community. I fear that if I'm open with future colleagues here, that they might not value my work. And there are at least a dozen or so people in my life here in Bowling Green that have the same fears, people that are Bowling Green-born and raised, Kentuckians, out of state, international students, and colleagues. What I tell people coming from China and coming from Ohio, or those coming to Bowling Green and WKU for the Chinese program, is this, is that if you're looking for a decent university education, yeah, it might be worth it, but stay on campus. If you're looking to build a new home for yourself, uproot whatever life you had and came here, you might as well look somewhere else. Because anyone who trades all of their chips in to make a new home for themselves in Bowling Green should at least be treated with the most basic dignity and respect. I'm personally asking you to reconsider this policy, because for many people like me in our own community, this is what defines Bowling Green, not just as a place of residence, but as a home. Thank you.
Hi. I'm Jeremy McFarland. I live at 198 Old Porter Pike here in Bowling Green. I went to Paducah last Tuesday for their city commission meeting. Paducah is now the ninth city in Kentucky to pass a fairness ordinance, which protects the basic human rights of the LGBTQ community in employment, housing, and public accommodations in Paducah. So that's very exciting. It was amazing to be there for such a historic moment and to celebrate with members of Paducah's LGBTQ community. Today, one week since Paducah's historic vote, I have again seen just how deeply the LGBTQ community in Bowling Green needs these same protections. I'm in close contact with many transgender, non-binary, gender nonconforming people in our city. This morning, I woke up to a young transgender woman I know looking for a ride. She wanted to get to a pawn shop so she could get a loan to buy food. Had we not found an alternative solution, this would have been the second time she was forced to do this in the last two months. When I contacted her, she had already gone over 24 hours without eating. At the end of last year, she was fired from her job because she wanted to have the name she goes by on her name tag. Her manager said this was inappropriate, and she needed to see a shrink. If she lived in Paducah, she would now be able to contest this firing. Unfortunately, she is unable to do so here in Bowling Green. She's been unable to find new employment since this happened. Because of this, she has not had consistent access to food. She's not the first transgender person in Bowling Green I've known to deal with wrongful termination, food insecurity, and homelessness. Another friend of mine was nearly evicted from her apartment. Another lived in their car for several months before finding support. What makes this even harder is that many resources to support those facing homelessness or food insecurity in Bowling Green choose not to help the LGBTQ community. More often than not, these individuals must rely on the kindness of others in the LGBTQ community to get by. I'm glad to see Paducah passed a fairness ordinance. It is amazing, it's an amazing first step towards supporting the LGBTQ community there. I hope Bowling Green will take this important step to support citizens, too. Thank you.
Any else? No one else? Okay, we'll go in now to our work. I'm sorry.
Leslie Garrett, 1359 Park Street. I am a resident, or I'm from Paducah, born and raised there, and I'm now based in Bowling Green organizing. So last week's passing of the fairness ordinance was a very, very personal, very painful victory, mainly because, like, I grew up in the church, and doing that final organizing to support the passing of that ordinance did involve a lot of very difficult discussions within the faith community. And one of the last comments that was brought at the hearing of that ordinance in the vote was from a leader of our Paducah Cooperative Ministries, who's a major leader, does a lot for the community, and especially in the faith community. And she called in the love and how our communities take care of our own, and how the discussion of that ordinance was more about making sure that everyone has access to housing, food that's safe, just basic rights. So I'm not going to spend much more time on that. I just wanted to say that I'm very proud of Paducah for passing that, and I'm glad to be here and hope to see that passing of it soon. Thanks.
Any else? Work session tonight on trying to do something that hadn't been done in a decade or so, trying to find a way to fill a position. So I think Mr. Grubbs...
I'm going to take off. Is that all right?
Head on out. Not that we don't appreciate your input, but we're going to talk about the position. Change your mind? About you.
No. You guys got it.
Okay. Mr. Grubbs, I asked if you would mind putting together a briefing of what had occurred in the past, and then we'll talk about what we'd like to do from the fold.
I'm sorry. I believe in your packets, you're provided kind of a summary outline of the process in 2005, and then there was also a PowerPoint. The Kentucky League of Cities prepared for the city at that time, since it had obviously been many years since we'd gone through a city manager selection process. And I will attempt to summarize the process from before, and then a few key points for you all to think about as we move forward with the recruitment selection. The process in 2005 took seven months, from the beginning of recruitment until the new city manager actually started. As I mentioned, the League of Cities provided a presentation with some initial guidance and also connected us with a consultant who provided some needs assessment facilitation. We had a two-month recruitment process, basically recruited a month and then allowed a second month for applicants to submit an application or resume. And then the Human Resources Director went through an initial screening to make sure that the candidates met some minimum qualifications that were set out as a result of the assessment process. At that time, or in that time, we had a seven-citizen committee that was selected by the Board of Commissioners, and they were tasked with actually reviewing the resumes and selecting the candidates that would be interviewed. Two of the commissioners here were involved in the process last time, Commissioner Nash as a commissioner, and then Commissioner Perigin was one of the citizens on that committee. And then we also had seven employees who were selected by various employee groups who participated in the first round of interviews. And they met with the citizen committee and together conducted the interviews. The citizen committee recommended 10 candidates for interviews, but six were actually interviewed. The others had declined or taken other jobs in the meantime. And after those committees completed the interviews, there were four candidates recommended to move on to the Board of Commissioners for interview, with two candidates actually being interviewed by the board. Then we had a police investigator do background investigation, then the final candidate, Mr. DeFabo, then had to relocate after giving notice. As a result of that process, there were some key tasks and attributes that were developed through a survey process. Again, the consultant that the League of Cities had recommended worked with the Board of Commissioners, the citizen committee, and also a representation of city department heads to develop the list of key tasks that you have here, communication, oversight and management, strategic planning, alliance building and partnerships, and then also fiscal responsibility. And then also developed key job attributes, personal accountability, interpersonal skills, teamwork, self-management, diplomacy intact, results orientation, and problem solving. In the presentation from the League of Cities, they had several key principles. Be clear on what we're looking for in a city manager. They said it was important to maintain confidentiality in the process. Obviously, these candidates typically have a job somewhere else, and they don't want their Board of Commissioners to know that they're applying with us, at least until they're well into the process. We also need to present a well-organized process so that candidates have confidence that they would be coming to a high-performing organization, and we need to act quickly and move the process along, don't take a lot of time. They said, make sure to determine the process that you're going to follow, set a timetable for your recruitment and selection, and then also determine who is going to handle the initial screening. Is that Human Resources, or is that a committee, board members, or some other group? Begin with an end in mind. What are our needs for the city, say, for the next 10 years? What are the major issues that we're facing? What does the board want? What do you need in a city manager? And then also, what do the public and the city staff want in a city manager? You'll also need to consider salary and benefits. Do we advertise a range? Do we say it's open until we see what the successful candidate requests? Need to clarify if there are any other job-specific benefits, specific to the city manager job that we might need to offer that we don't typically offer other employees. And then when we get down to the final candidate, recognize that we have to be prepared, that there may be some negotiating on certain things, such as moving expenses, continuation of their insurance where they work until they come here, and then also temporary housing allowance is just examples. They recommended, obviously, one decision for the board to make is, will you consider internal candidates and invite internal candidates to apply, or is this a process where you're only going to consider external candidates? They recommended allowing 30 to 60 days to recruit and for people to apply, and then also to determine an initial screening process and criteria, because we'll get applications perhaps from candidates that we're not really that interested in, but unless we know what the commission wants and desires in a candidate, we wouldn't know for sure whether to screen them. Because we'll get applications perhaps from candidates that we're not really that interested in, but unless we know what the commission wants and desires in a candidate, we wouldn't know for sure whether to screen them in or out. Is it important to you that they have experience in local government or not? Is it important that they have experience providing the types of services that the city of Bowling Green offers? Are you concerned about the size of the budget and the staffing of the organization that they have managed? What is their employment history? Do they have increasing responsibility in their job or do they, and do they have good tenure in their career? What specific responsibilities and what specific accomplishments have they achieved and how do those compare to our objectives and priorities? And again, how does their salary fit with our parameters? Moving to today, what's different in 2018 compared to 2005? We have a seasoned Board of Commissioners, whereas last time you'd been on the board, what, about two and a half months? We don't have any significant problems, to my knowledge, in our city government or management versus, we all know what happened in 2005 with the embezzlement by the CFO at the time. And most of our senior management personnel have changed since 2005. Initial objectives, how extensively do you wish to recruit? Do you want a national recruitment? Do you want us to limit it to professional associations such as International City County Managers Association and our state association, the Kentucky League of Cities and other lesser expensive internet advertising? Again, will you consider internal candidates this time? You'll need to select an interim manager by March 1st and determine whether that individual would be allowed to apply and be considered for city manager if that individual even wants to be considered. You'll need to determine, do you want to do a new needs assessment like was done in 2005? Or are you more willing to list, you know, what your objectives are for the city manager? Or use the key attributes and tasks that were developed last time? And is there specific information that the board wants to include when we're recruiting and sending out recruitment announcements? You'll need to determine the level of involvement of the board in our earlier stages. Obviously, you'd be involved as we get into the final candidates, but do you want to be the ones to review all resumes? Do you want to be the ones to select the candidates for interviews? You'll need to decide what level of citizen involvement and employee involvement we have this time. Again, we recommend candidate confidentiality. You do not have to disclose the resumes and you can interview in closed session. Again, the reason being that if we get 40 applications again this time, there's 39 people that aren't going to get the job. They're not going to want their boards to know they applied. Obviously, if they get in late in the process, they're going to let their boards know. Open for thoughts and suggestions. Glad to have those funneled through the mayor if you so wish to talk about it later on, but these are kind of our initial concerns is how you want us to start the recruitment process and how involved the board wants to be in the early stages.
I know. I think a lot of this we can work through tonight. Been sending out information from the previous search to the members of the commission. All I can do is compliment Commissioner Nash and Parigin for their selection last time. I think we did a, not just a good job, an outstanding job. Kevin's done very, very well in helping us out here. So, I'm not sure I want to stray much from the job attributes and principles that they had. Like you said, we're an experienced commission as opposed to some that were just on a couple of months the last time. So, I don't know that I want to go through the entire seven-month process. I think we've got a good staff and a good, good working relationship. But I think based on talking to y'all, the first thing we need to do is make sure of continuity within our staff. And it's been our practice that the interns, in the interim position does not, is not considered for the regular role. And if you're still of that mind, I've had conversations with our assistant city manager who has great interest in being the interim manager, which in my mind is kind of a natural fit, but not interested in applying for the permanent position at this time. So, that would make a good fit for you. If anybody has any comments or other ideas, I'll put that on the agenda for the next commission because right now, as when the city manager's not here and he knows he's going to be here, then he appoints someone in his position. I don't know if it'd be appropriate for the guy not here to appoint someone, so I guess we would need to do that.
We should and we will.
If I put that on the next agenda?
Yeah, I would support that wholeheartedly.
And for the period of time that she's there, I don't know what kind of additional compensation that she would attain for being in that, but we'll consider that too because she'll have a lot of extra-
I could prepare a recommendation for you.
Thank you.
As well as ours, sorry.
Here's a set by law.
No, no, I'm not talking about my salary. I'm talking about an increase for the assistant city manager that is named interim.
That's what he's going to put together and give to us, is a suggestion. And then we'll make the decision.
I'll provide the mayor with a recommendation on that.
All right, the last time, is anybody interested in using a search firm?
Well, will KLC do the same thing for us?
Well, the difference between what KLC does and a search firm is that they will put the ad out as opposed to a search firm will go and recruit people on our behalf. I think Bowling Green is a tremendous opportunity for anybody interested in managing a city and I'm not sure that it's necessarily spending those funds for recruiting, essentially recruiting firm. I think KLC and ICMA and what was the other group that you mentioned here?
Kentucky City County Managers Association.
There are two other city manager openings out of the 32 in Kentucky, Paducah and Henderson. Far, this would be a plonk of those jobs. And I know with Kevin's resignation, it's already filtered out among KLC, so people are anticipating this to-
I think I'd much rather see someone who wants to come here than someone who is recruited to come here.
I would agree with you, so everybody's on board with using those three mediums to let people know that we have this opening.
And what are those?
Kentucky League of Cities, the International City Managers Association and the Kentucky City Managers Association.
We'd post it on our website and reach out that way as well.
And would we still use the normal ways that we ensure minority recruitment? Just like we would for any other position?
We would put it out in our normal recruitment and it often gets picked up by other internet recruitment sites as well.
Ideas here is one of the qualities that's required, or was required previously was city manager experience. And I'm not certain that that leaves a big pool of minority candidates to look at. So, I'm not, although that would be an advantage if somebody had previous municipal experience, I'm not sure that we ought to list it as a requirement because a good-
There's some out there somewhere.
City manager experience?
Prefer, yes, yes, obviously it'd be preferred. But management's the same anywhere, it's just details and-
Of course, you know, in those positions, just like engineers and any other professional category, the numbers are going to be slim, but there are some out there, somewhere. City managers and engineers that are minority. Whatever publication can get out there to the most people.
The thing is, if we're looking at the organizations we've looked at advertising or recruiting through are all city government related, city or county government related. Other than, you know, what we put out ourselves, the bulk of where we're going to get applicants is going to be from other cities or counties.
Secondary pool though is going to be these internet job searches that will automatically pick it up. And those will go out, those will go out to everybody. And hopefully, we'll find the best qualified candidate. We won't worry about their, you know, whether or not they're a minority or not. We want the best qualified person, period.
I agree, I just want to make sure that it's ending up in minority pools where we can make sure that we're getting the best qualified candidate.
So, it is, will our heard candidate as opposed to required candidate have to have municipal experience? Going with preference as opposed to requirement?
I'm open to preferences. It's a big preference for me, but I would like to, I would like to see what people have.
You just eliminate, the more requirements you have, the more limited pool of candidates you have.
Let that be for minorities, including women. I mean, let's touch all the bases and let's do it right. There are women out there and somewhere that we can find them and the best person for the city of Bowling Green, let's bring them. What publication would that be in? That type of advertisement?
I think that whatever recruitment we do, we'll indicate minority and female applicants are encouraged to apply.
I just wonder if we couldn't identify some publications that target minorities and target women? And that we couldn't, you know, list the job in those publications, whether they're organizations, professional organizations or whether they're professional magazines or newsletters that go out. I think we could rely on the university potentially for some of that information to at least make sure we're getting it in front of an audience to, like Rick said, Commissioner Williams said that we get the most qualified candidate. But we're not going to get the most qualified candidate if we don't get it in front of the most number of people.
Black Enterprise Magazine out in New York. Business Magazine.
When we come to our retreat next week, if you wouldn't mind looking through these key tasks and attributes and have them, if you would, there are several there if you don't mind listing what you prefer. Yeah, next Tuesday? It's all day, Joe. Starts early in the morning, too.
Starts at 6 o'clock, 6 a.m.
If you could bring your key tasks and attributes and we'll give them to Mike to compile and then turn him loose on doing the application. I'm not interested in a 60-day, it just seems, it just extends our process out. Seven months before, certainly don't want to go that long this time if we can. And we'll compile them and give them to Mike to put into his information and go from there. Previously, they had several committees that were set up. I think a lot of that might have been due to the newness of the commission to try to figure out what the community wanted since it'd been 30-some years since they'd had a city manager. I don't know that we need to go that route because I understand it was very cumbersome to try to arrange to have all these people in certain places, certain time, to maintain the confidentiality of the applicants and so forth. I guess I'm just inclined to let Mike filter them and then send them to us from there. What do y'all think?
I don't think we have to have a committee. It needs to be a very short in number one.
Sure, Mike would appreciate the help rather than reading every single one. I don't have any problem with that, is that okay?
Yeah, I mean, I would almost even think department heads, provided those department heads aren't applying.
That's the next question. I know the question's on here, you know, last time there was some issues that may have precluded us from considering internal candidates. I think, I don't know how many department heads we have, but how many department heads we have or how many qualified candidates I think we have in this, in this organization. And I would encourage them to encourage us to consider any of them that applied.
I would.
All of us are on board with that. So, internal candidates are certainly welcome, except you, Mike.
Thank you.
Thanks for doing your favor. And I guess, I like the way you just said thank you. You read your own into it. In that case, would there, it would be my suggestion that somebody take the place of that department head? If that makes sense. So, if, I'm looking at Greg, so if Public Works applied, then Greg's clearly not going to be on the committee, but I think the person directly below Greg would then fill that role.
And I have all the department heads filter through them or just two or three?
I was using your guidance of two or three. I mean, so I would select individuals that I don't think are going to apply, but we're not going to review them until we get applications in anyway, probably. So, we'd have a good idea if anyone internally is applying. If anyone internally is going to apply, let me know and you won't be on the committee. No, I agree, no.
But I don't know that their department should be precluded from having-
Yeah, you might look at another level of that particular department. And so, we have a good cross-section of representation as well if you wanted to consider that.
I'm not sure department head is the level that-
I would agree with that as well.
I think any internal candidate would be considered who meet the qualifications that we set out. Let's see here. I think salary has got to be fluid in that we, based upon qualifications and experience. I mean, a good applicant's going to do some research and find out what the current one's making anyway. We're doing all the talking, guys.
At the retreat, Bruce, could we spend maybe 30 minutes as a team?
Sorry, your microphone's not picking you up.
All right. Could we spend maybe 30 minutes as a team during our retreat in sort of balancing our attributes out there so Mike could take notes and-
I can add that, absolutely.
Rather than coming with a typed up thing and then everybody that we could, and then could we get the the last, or did we, did you all send the job description?
Sent the job description and the order that hired, which was, I guess, kind of a contract form.
That was the job description we used to recruit? Or is that a job description that's been updated since?
I think it's, I think it's what was used to recruit.
Do we have, is it different now? I mean, do we have a different job description for that?
Okay. Ups here.
Are you saying you would like to see the job description at that meeting or before that meeting?
Or to send it out?
I sent out the job description and our municipal order, which was essentially the contract that hired him. And just as a reminder to the commission, it's not a term of appointment. For example, you can't hire a city manager for a term of five years and then reappoint. By law, it's an indeterminate amount. And there's no guarantee of employment. It's the pleasure of the commission. Yes, yes.
I'd be glad to resend that information if you'd like it.
Yeah, no, I was just wondering.
If you don't mind, bring it for each of us at the meeting, that way we can, that way if we forget-
Include it in the packet or something.
Yeah, can do that.
I was just, you know, because- I was just, you know, because the job description that was ten years ago may not reflect the job that is actually being done today. So, the job morphs. I mean, I know some about HR, that usually those get updated periodically. So, I'm wondering if what Kevin was actually doing is correctly represented in the job description. So, maybe recommendations on that also.
All right. I've done a lot of talking. What else y'all got for it?
What we haven't got tonight, we can have next week at six a.m., when we start our meeting.
Mike, could you put out to city staff if there's a particular attribute or an issue that they want us to know about? You can send it to me, and I'll distribute it, or to all five of us, and I'll make that appeal to the same members of the, I'm sorry.
No, no, I just talked to Commissioner Nash about this program.
And I'll make that same appeal to the public. If there's a particular attribute or issue that they want us to consider, and as we can look for a new city manager, email me, too. It's on the city's website, bruce.wilkinson@bgky.org, and I'll make sure the rest of the commission gets that information.
Want it sent from the employees to you?
Please.
As opposed to me collecting them?
Yeah, if they'll send it to me directly, and they don't want their name misused, I won't do that either, so.
Okay.
In that case, would it be better from the employee's standpoint, if they filter through you first? I just, I don't want an employee to feel like if they list something in particular, that they feel like they're reporting. I don't, I don't want anything to hold anybody back.
Me or Mike, either one?
Okay.
Mike?
Sir. Wes, are you putting that in your story, so that the public will send comments?
I will.
Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Fix us up, Wes. I mean, you know, get, put us up with that upper level.
This is an important decision for our city, so it's good that, it's good that we hear from all sides and all parties that are invested.
Any other comments on city manager selection and recruitment process?
No, sir.
All right. Next scheduled meeting is February 6, 2018. Thank you for tuning in.